We'll call to order the planning commission meeting for Thursday, January 19th, 2023. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowell, please call and roll.
Yep.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here.
All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Chair Schwartz. I move that we adopt the agenda for today.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our December 15th, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
I move approval of the minutes from the December 15th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
I second that.
Motion by Heikala, second by Knoblock. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are approved. Our first order of business this evening is to adopt or consider adoption of the 2023 Code of Ethics, Rules of Order, and Internal Procedures and Policies.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
For this agenda item, I'd actually like to take the internal procedures and policies off of this. I think there's some edits just for cleanup that might be needed and take the time to discuss it either out of line or prepare it for next month, but otherwise, I would move approval of this without internal policies and procedures on this agenda item.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Is that something we'll kick back to staff, or is it something that we want to address maybe?
So I, there's, there's a few items that I would send to staff if they would like to collect them and then pass them back out, and if anybody has any other edits, I think we would put that together for the February agenda. Would that be how that would work, ideally?
Right, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler, we did receive some of your notes and perhaps it would be appropriate if you wanted to highlight just kind of the topics, but yes, we took a look at those and agree that there may be some slight adjustments and can bring that back in February for formal consideration and note the changes that were made from last year.
Sure, just some of the items that I found. The meeting attendance item lacks kind of any guidance on what is reasonable attendance or lack thereof. I thought we could probably discuss that and define it. I think it used to be defined. There's also a rotational chairship to familiarize someone's role with the chair, which we haven't performed since I've joined. We can clean that up. And then I had a couple follow-up questions on planning conferences and some other items, some other wording of changing a will to a may or other small tweaks like that. But I don't, we can either discuss it now, I suppose, otherwise we could actually see written language later, would be my preference personally.
All right, any other discussion?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I've been here a few years, and these internal procedures and policies, I'd like to see, I think that isn't it not staff's prerogative in the city council of, not city council, but the city staff of procedures of their recommendations and for us to approve? I believe the feedback is wonderful if the planning committee and city staff would like to consider it, but I'd like to have more detail on what these changes are, so we could either discuss now or table it to discuss at a later date also. But I believe the previous standing ethics, rules of order, and internal procedures and policies are quite standard, so.
We've got a workshop later this evening. Could we add that as additional discussion at the end of our workshop? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, generally that, that agenda for the work session has been published, so I think we generally discourage adding an item. I don't know, Mr. Bucciconi, if that is a fair assessment. I think it would probably be best to just bring it back in February.
So, Mr. Brown is correct. There was, it wasn't noticed for the work section?
Okay.
Session? It was noticed for here. As for who writes the rules, staff doesn't. So if this body wants to change the rules, the body needs to change the rules. We don't make tweaks. That's under 3-202.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're not talking about the rules, correct? We're talking about the procedures and policies specifically.
Yeah, same.
Same? So is it something then that is editable, or are we saying that, okay, they are amendable then?
The only, by ordinance, the only thing required is it complies with, quote, "shall conform to the provisions of the city code and resolutions adopted by the city council." But earlier, in that same sentence is, each such body adopt its own rules of procedure.
So we would just be giving some input for the rules and procedures? Basically.
You are required under that statute to adopt your own rules of procedure. If there's changes that need to occur, and you want a document to look at and that sort of thing, certainly we can edit that and make it happen, but this body needs to tell us to do that. We can't do that. Not supposed to.
So, Mr. Chair, what I would maybe recommend is I, there are things that I would like to edit. I think we would put that over to staff, and instead, if there are other edits anyone would make, they could collate all of the recommendations we would have, but then we would go forward from there if that's what we agreed to do. Is that, would that be the process then?
Right, I think if there's different versions of the policies or procedures or what have you that you'd like to see amendments to, I think the body needs to discuss that.
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Bucciconi, then the question I have is, can we approve this tonight and then still submit an amendment later on?
Absolutely. You could adopt these.
Yeah, we could adopt it.
And then re-adopt a different version of them. Or not re-adopt, adopt a different version of them, say, next month if you wanted to.
That would be my recommendation, is to adopt it tonight, and then if there are recommendations to modify it, that we submit those, and then we can always do that. Do we need a new motion?
At, at that point, then I would, if that's what the body would like, I would voluntarily rescind my motion to follow the rules, and then we could proceed with a fresh one.
Do you want to make this a motion then to adopt, or?
Sure, I will make a motion to adopt our 2023 Code of Ethics, Rules of Order, and Internal Procedures and Policies as stated within our packet.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Geisler and second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they're adopted.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just if, it sounds like, Mr., we've talked about this plenty this week, actually. It sounds like there's some interest from the group at looking at these procedures and policies and things of that like. So I just ask that you all let us know. Send us anything you'd like tweaked, and it sounds like we'll have several work sessions as we move forward, and we can notice this as an agenda item, and we can talk about it without cameras and making sausage for everything.
Thank you. All right, our second order of business this evening is election of a vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I would like to nominate Mary Schmalki to be vice chair for the calendar year 2020.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I'd like to nominate Don Heikala. With, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
With due respect, I would like to not be considered with vice chair position.
All right. Commissioner Schmalki, you're willing to accept the position if so elected?
I will.
Any other nominations? All right, we have a motion by Casey, and the second by?
Geisler.
Geisler to appoint Chair, Commissioner Schmalki as the vice chair for 2023. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Excuse me. That motion is approved. Congratulations, Vice Chair Schmalki.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, our next, all right.
Please unset puberty.
Our first case for this evening is planning case 23-1, a conditional use permit for Parkwood Substation Expansion at 1650 111th Avenue Northwest, Great River Energy. Mr. Crowell.
All right, yeah, good evening, Commission. So on this first item, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for an expansion to an existing substation. So you're getting the address 1650 111th Ave. Northwest, actually just a little slightly west of City Hall here, kind of between the Public Works Building and City Hall. This area is zoned low-density residential two, and then in our future land use designation is utility. And so in the LDR two zoning district, utility structures and public buildings are a conditional use, and we had just noticed that we didn't have a conditional use permit on file for the substation, and so with this expansion, staff had just recommended to go through this process to get that conditional use permit for the utility structure, and then to also offer the public hearing on the project. In their proposal, Great River Energy is proposing to expand its Parkwood Substation to help modernize the electrical apparatus, increase reliability, and provide better electric service. And then, here on this map, the expansion would be within Great River Energy's existing property, and then increase the fenced area of the substation about 194 feet east and then 80 feet south. So I tried to kind of show that on the aerial here where that 194 feet east comes out, and then down 80 feet here and kind of squaring off. So this would be the expansion area. The existing fenced area is approximately 41,000 square feet, and then this expansion would add approximately 48,000 square feet. The trees would be preserved on site where possible to maintain that buffer there between some of the residential properties in the substation, but it will require some minor tree clearing and then infill to match the grade on the existing substation, and then a new stormwater pond would be provided on site. So in the application, the, the existing kind of metal box structure that you see here is about 40 feet high, and that would be replaced with a new low-profile design that's about 14 feet in height, and then some of the existing poles and transmission lines would be relocated on site as well. So this is an example of the structure that's out there today, and then this was a picture of the kind of more low-profile design that was shared by the applicant here. So while the, the substation itself is almost doubling in size and kind of increasing on the site, the overall height of the project is going to be significantly less than what's out there today. And so here was a site plan provided by the applicant, again, just kind of showing this purple line is the existing substation that's out there. The green line is that extended area. The yellow lines are kind of showing some of the grading work that would be done in that stormwater pond, and then the red lines are just showing kind of where the new transmission lines would be relocated on the site. And then, kind of given the, the limited information around design and dimensional standards for utility structures in our residential districts, we did recommend that the application be for a conditional use permit without site plan review, and that the main setbacks for the substation would be 35 feet from the front and rear property lines and 10 feet from any side property line, which this proposal complies with. In many ways, very similar to the water tower conditional use permit that was approved at the December meeting, kind of a similar scenario. And then I'll just, I made a note that part of the substation would be built into the wetland area, and that the wetland impacts would require permit review and approval by the Coon Creek Watershed District, which I believe Great River Energy has already kind of started that process and have been working with them on that. So, and the staff recommendation in planning case 23-1 is to approve the conditional use permit for an expansion to the existing substation with the following condition, that being all engineering comments be addressed. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and we do have representatives here from Great River Energy that can help address any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, if you can pull up the grading image there, or, yeah, you've got it right there. The, to the south of the site there, there's that dark green line that looks like there's vegetation clearing. Is that all within an easement already? Because it doesn't look like it's on the property, the, the property to the east. So is that additional clearing that's going to happen in an easement? Is that on their property? Is it somebody else's property?
Um, yeah, maybe the applicant would be able to better address that. I think my understanding on the east side there, it is your property, but maybe to the south.
Yeah, it was more to the south of the existing station.
Yeah, so that would be a question probably good for Great River Energy, yeah.
And if you give your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Dale Elke with Great River Energy, 2458 Sherwood Road in Mountain View. I am, thank you for hearing us this evening, Commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity. Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Geisler, to answer your question, yes, that would be an additional easement that's being, that is, we're in negotiations right now with the church for that. The transmission lines, which are the red lines that you see kind of in that area, there's not enough separation between all the existing lines that are there to have it fully on our property. We tried to work it that way. There just wasn't sufficient area to do that. The easement area there that you see, we do have on the north-south lines, red lines there, we have a, we have a 75-foot easement from the center line to the west. Where the green line is showing, there is the extent of the tree clearing. That is a 70, it's 75 feet south of our property line, and roughly about 450 feet east to west. Mostly it's low-growing brush, but it obviously, just for pole placement and such, it would need to be placed.
Yeah, just, just asking as the plan is, those parts aren't on your property, so.
Correct, correct, yeah. But we are in negotiations with, with the church on, on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heikala.
Negotiations are, I can assume then are going well. What would happen if the negotiations failed?
Uh, well, but I, I think they're going to go fine. I think we're probably going to be done probably in a week or so here. Yeah, we haven't had any, obviously have to go through their, their council for approval and so forth, but Great River Energy has electric utility, and here in the state does have the power of eminent domain. So if, if it got to that point, traditional, and, and understanding from the, from the utility standpoint, it becomes a matter of money there, and I, I don't think money is what is, is any of the concern that's, that's going on with the discussions, so. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner, at this time? Is there anything else petitioners would like to add before we have a public hearing? No? All right, then I will open a public hearing in planning case 23-1, a conditional use permit for Parkwood Substation Expansion at 1650 111th Ave. Northwest, Great River Energy. Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Crowell, the conditional use permit, is that something new, or should it have always been in effect for utilities?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Maybe it was a zoning change, so this was already kind of there before. It was a conditional use. I don't know of that, if you have any history there, but that, that would be my assumption, is that that was already there before the zoning was changed.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Casey, I, I believe that's right, that it's likely that the substation predates the version of the zoning code that required a conditional use permit for electric utilities.
Okay, so a housekeeping kind of thing almost, to, without all the i's, cross the t's and?
To, to some extent, although this is a substantial enough alteration to the use that it likely would have triggered an amendment to a conditional use permit if there had been one. So it would likely be coming before you anyway.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for Mr. Crowell. Is there any timeline or word on when the Coon Creek Watershed District is going to provide a report or input?
Yeah, that's a good question, and maybe Great River Energy would have an update, because I know that's something they've been starting, that process. I'm not as familiar their, their timing. I know, depending on the, the scale of the project, it can take a little bit of time to get through that process, yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mark Strofus, 9743 Greenspruce Court, North, Brooklyn Park, Minnesota. Yes, we, we have submitted our application to the Coon Creek Watershed District as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We have, we performed a wetland delineation on the site last summer, and Coon Creek Watershed District has informed us that they need to review and approve that delineation, which will happen in, sometime in the spring. They need plant growth to identify the boundaries of the wetlands, so that's a little ways off. We are currently in the process of working on a no-impacts application with them, so that, that will allow us to clear the trees here hopefully in February and March of this year. There's a number of issues out there. Northern long-eared bat has recently been listed as endangered, so the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would like us to clear trees before April of this year, I believe. They don't have absolute guidance out yet. It becomes effective January 30th, and they tell us we may have guidance on January 30th, or maybe a couple weeks after. And then we're also in the process of working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to get their approval to clear trees. That, that process is unbeknownst really to myself right now. I have several calls in to the Army Corps staff people and a couple emails, and, you know, a lot of government officials are very busy, and it'll take time for them to get back to us, so.
Thank you, very good information.
All right, Commissioner, any, anything else? Anyone wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, I'll make a motion that in planning case 23-1, we approved the conditional use permit for an expansion to an existing substation with the conditions listed in our packet.
I'll second.
Commissioner, or, motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries, and this is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, our second case this evening is planning case 23-2, preliminary plat for a water tower addition, City of Coon Rapids Public Works. Mr. Crowell.
All right, so here in this case, the applicant is requesting preliminary plat approval for a two-lot subdivision related to the redevelopment of vacant property for a new municipal water tower. So these are the, the two lots that are currently owned by the city, the one with the water tower being 9585 Foley Boulevard, and the other has an unassigned address at this time. Again, the current zoning here is Port Evergreen, and it's in our River Rapids overlay district, and then the future land use designation is commercial mixed use. In this proposal, the plat is related kind of to adjust that shared property line between the two city-owned parcels. Lot one would host the water tower and be 1.43 acres, and lot two would be 3.59 acres. And so this plat relates to the approved conditional use permit for a municipal water tower in planning case 22-27, so the case that we had heard at the December meeting. So just putting the water tower site plan here as a reference, just to know kind of lot one in this preliminary plat, this would be the proposed layout for the water tower on that site. So the total size of the site is just a little over five acres. Again, the water tower would be located on lot one and is 1.43 acres, and then lot two is 3.59 acres and would be available for future development. Both lots comply with a minimum lot area and lot width in our port district. The minimum lot width was 50 feet, and then any kind of residential use has a minimum square footage of 6,000 square feet, which this corner lot does meet. And then, given that this plat doesn't result in any additional development that would cause additional demand on recreational park facilities, in this case being the, the water tower, a utility structure, we felt that a park dedication fee wouldn't be collected with the plat, but could be collected with any applicable development on lot two. Here's just an aerial if it is a little helpful. The red lines are kind of showing the existing property lines, and then this blue outline is kind of showing approximately where that, with this proposed plat, where the new property lines would be. So you kind of see this, this area essentially being transferred over into, into the corner lot to make it a little bit larger for development. And so here in a, in the staff recommendation is that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat. So when it comes to the, to the plat, the planning commission is the recommending body, and so this preliminary and then the final plat would be scheduled to go to the city council on February 7th for final approvals. So I'm happy to help answer any questions you might have, and then we do have Tim Himmer here as well to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell?
Oh, Mr. Crowell, where on lot one is that, will there be a pond, a drainage pond? Is that on lot, part of it on lot one?
Yeah, that's correct. So on, on lot one? So on lot one, kind of with the layout, the water tower itself is more on the southern portion of that lot, and then closer along Foley Boulevard is, I believe it's an existing pond that's there, part of the Foley reconstruction, and then that been expanded onto there on that lot.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, so I should keep the plat up there for the site plan. So with this, that gravel access drive shifts from lot one to lot two, fully?
Yep, yeah, so in the, one of the conditions from the CUP was that the city would get an access kind of easement there. So the, kind of that temporary access drive would be on lot two, and then in the future, when that would get developed, we would work with whoever's developing lot two to get that access easement to ensure that we still have access to the water tower. So it would require them going on to lot two to get access to the water tower on lot one.
Okay, so maybe more specifically, so we're, you're transferring land to lot two, but you're basically still going to be using it, and it may not be able to be improved because it's still an access drive to the water tower? Or would that, if they, for instance, put a parking lot there, so long as it provided access, that would be sufficient?
Yeah, I think that would be sufficient. I think the idea here was just to provide kind of a temporary, like gravel or crushstone drive, knowing that, you know, we didn't want to be restrictive on how the other lot would be developed. So if we would pave that and then in a year have to rip it up anyway, depending on how lot two would be developed, it was kind of left to just give us a little bit more flexibility on what that access could look like.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowell? Mr. Himmer, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, Chair Schwartz, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone asks.
Has the city come up with a decision on design yet of the tower?
Chair Schwartz, Commissioner, we just received approval from the city council this past Tuesday evening. The project will be out for bid starting tomorrow.
Don't you have to pick a design and get bids?
We are bidding both the composite and the all-steel hydro pillar, just to get costs on each one, and then we'll prepare lifecycle analysis to determine what's the best value. So we're going to bid them separate.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 23-2, preliminary plat for a water tower addition for the City of Coon Rapids Public Works. Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
You know, I think I understand the intent of what we're doing here from the city side, but I have a little consternation around that we're transferring land to lot two, but the city's still basically reserving it for their driveway. Why wouldn't we just keep that as part of lot one? You know, I think it does feel a little preemptive to move it into there and move it into, that lot would get developed, would have to be taxed on that square footage and that acreage, and then, but it still has to provide access. It would, it's probably still going to stay a crush drive until it gets bought. It does kind of limit the design of that site as well, as far as what could go, where the driveways and, because it's to maintain access on that side. So it, I find this a little odd in what it's doing and where, how we're building the site out and how the access to the water tower will be. Just some concerns on why we're doing this the way we're doing it, especially knowing that that driveway will then always be on lot two.
Chair Schwartz, if I may.
Mr. Himmer.
Commissioner Geisler. There's a few reasons why that access is where it is. Number one, Foley Boulevard was designed that way, and we had to site it out of the right turn lane and far enough away. So as we were doing that project, they said, you got two lots in here. We talked about the water tower. We said, well, we'd like to just get one access point that can be shared. And we wanted to maximize the amount of developable land. So just because there's a gravel trail in a specific location, as long as they provide access from point A to point B to get us to that tower, I think it provides more flexibility for that lot. It's more acreage for them to use, and they can be creative as long as we can get the equipment we need in there. It could be a parking lot, it could be green space, it could be any way to get us from point A to point B and give them the flexibility and larger space to provide that. It doesn't have to be the specific alignment as it's shown, it just needs to get us back to get access to the site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I can make a motion.
All right.
In planning case 23-2, we'll make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat.
Second. Haeckel seconds.
Motion by Schmoki, second by Haeckel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be heard and decided by the city council at their February 7th meeting. Thank you, and good luck. All right, moving on to other business.
Yes, I guess for our March, no, our February meeting, sorry. For our February Planning Commission meeting, we have a comprehensive plan amendment and then a planned unit development, and that's for that Norbella Senior Living project. If you recall, there was a work session, I believe, back in November with Rachel Development on that site next to Metro Self Storage and kind of talking through some of the different policy-level things that we would do to try to accommodate that use on that site. And so they have their application, and that would be presented in February.
I also understand that we're losing a member of the planning staff. Mr. Ferelius is moving on to greener or other pastures?
Other pastures, Mr. Chair, yeah. If I could address the commission, just take a couple of minutes of your time tonight to, yes, acknowledge and confirm the rumors. Actually, I sent you a memo, so I think you're aware of it. I have accepted a job opportunity with the City of Plymouth to serve as their Community and Economic Development Director. It's a similar role. There are some other responsibilities related to housing. So it's an opportunity that intrigued me. As I've said to many people, I wasn't shopping for a new job. I was, I was very, very happy where I was here. This opportunity came, it arrived, it was like something that showed up in the mail unexpected, and I started to consider it and became intrigued, and things worked out. So, yes, that's where I'm going, but I wanted to take an opportunity to thank all of you for your service, for the opportunity to work with you these last eight years. I've known a few of you literally during my entire tenure here, and it's been great. And there, you know, are a few of you that have joined along the way and have appreciated your insights and perspectives. You know, the work that you do is very important, and I'm just grateful for the work that we've done together. Thankfully, we haven't had too many midnight meetings. I don't think we've had any. You know, some projects that are controversial, many that are not, but all of it is really, really good work, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity and will certainly miss working with all of you. I do want to mention that Matt Stemwaddle, the city manager, has appointed Matt Brown as the interim community development director. You know, a decision will be made at some point about what that looks like on a permanent basis, and Matt will certainly share that with you at the appropriate time. But Matt Brown has been with the city for, I think, 15 years and is certainly very capable and will do a great job. Dakota as well, and Blair have been great to work with. And so I feel good about the, in terms of the timing, having capable people here on staff to continue to carry out this really important work. And I'm just grateful for the opportunity and thankful to have worked with all of you and appreciated your support.
You'll be sorely missed, that's for sure.
Thank you.
And I'd give you...
Thank you.
And since we have Mr. Stemwaddle here...
Chair, members of the commission, I guess my timing is impeccable. I just got out of Metro City's meeting and walked in here. I'm here tonight primarily to thank Grant for his years of service to the city, as this will be his last public meeting. I'm sure we'll have a few more between now and February 1st. So I've really enjoyed working with Grant during his time here, and I think he's done a terrific job of setting the department up well for the future, and we've certainly benefited from your hard work here. But I have also really appreciated Grant's willingness to be involved in the community. I'm sure some of you are aware, Grant's a member of the Rotary Club, as am I, and we do a lot of involved, you know, very involved things for the community, including fundraising, miscellaneous things at the school district level. I know it's hard to name them all, and Grant's really been front and center in a lot of those things, including being the president of the Rotary Club several years ago and taking on a number of initiatives at that time. So I just wanted to make sure I slipped in. I was thinking maybe at the end of the meeting, I walked in, I heard Grant talking, and I thought, this is great. So thanks for letting me grab a little bit of your time tonight and giving Grant that thanks before you really get into the real business of the night, I suppose, so.
Thank you very much. And, Commissioner, anyone else have anything for other business?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Well, we'll miss you for, I always found you to be so well-thought, and you articulate what you think very well, and so appreciate all your efforts too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ready for a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Knoblauch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.